Council meeting. This is the meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We'll have the invocation by myself and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, as we enter this Thanksgiving holiday season, we want to pause and thank you, Lord, for all of the blessings that you have bestowed upon our city, Lord. Lord, we pray for all of the residents in our community that may be sick or hurting or lonely during this holiday season. And, Lord, we also want to pray for Councilmember Tommy Harvey's granddaughter, Lord, who is, her name is Kaylee and is in the hospital. Lord, please give us wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Okay. All present, we approve the minutes of November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay. Motion carries. Under, let's see where it ceremonial matters?
Yes, sir, we have to approve the agenda.
Two add-ons?
Oh, agenda, approve the agenda.
Yes, sir, we have two add-ons. The first one, the first one requested is going to be add-on number twelve under new business, introducing ordinance appropriating ten thousand dollars from the hotel motel tax fund to fund a Christmas and holiday lighting proposal from Red River Lights, LLC. First reading, and this add-on is requested due to getting approval as soon as possible to have project done by holiday season.
So moved.
Second.
So we've got a motion, any second, any comments from the audience, any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote to add this to the agenda. Okay, carries?
Carries. The next one, council, will be item number thirteen under new business, introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier City and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for the Viking Drive Road project. That's a first reading, and this add-on is requested so that as soon as plans are approved by DOTD, the city can begin property acquisition.
So moved.
So. Got a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. So we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Yes, sir.
Make the motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay. Now we'll move to, first, I'd like to recognize guests. I think we have the Bossier Youth Leadership Group here. If y'all would stand up and just say your name and what school you're with. Oh, my gosh, there's lots of you. Why don't we start over here?
I know her.
I'm Kylie Lane, and I go to Parkway High School.
My name is Kaylee Cash, and I go to Parkway High School.
My name is Kathleen Davis, I go to Parkway.
My name is Sarah Sutton, and I also go to Parkway.
My name is Haley Rivers, and I go to Parkway, too.
I'm Melissa Gaggy, and I go to Airline.
I'm Madeline Purges, and I go to Airline.
And I'm Neve Barry, and I go to Airline.
All right, well, it's great to have y'all here. Thank you for coming today. I hope you enjoy this meeting. On ceremonial matters, we have Dr. Bruce Wilson, the CEO for United Way, to give us an update on two-one-one expansion. Welcome.
It's good to be here, Mr. President, Mayor Walker, Councilman. What I'm here to do is to give you just a brief update, and I seem to have lost the screen.
It's got to come up.
Coming up, okay. United Way has been involved in a change in the way we do business over the last several years. We used to exist as basically a pass-through fundraising arm for nonprofit organizations, and that is no longer the case. It's a very small part of our business. We have stood up several specific kinds of programs that we fund and we run in order to improve the lives of the citizens of the parishes we serve, and specifically Bossier City. But one, you invest in, and that is the dialing code two-one-one, so I'm here just to give you a brief update and to answer any questions you might have concerning this. When people get in times of trouble, they don't know where to turn. They'll make phone calls to the city, or they might make phone calls to their church or other places, and they just can't get immediate kind of help. Well, what the dialing code two-one-one does is it connects people with that. So in other words, they call and they say, "I can't pay my light bill," or "I'm having trouble meeting my rent payment." They then get referrals to people and services that can help them get that need. Two-one-one existed statewide with one exception, and that was Northwest Louisiana until November of two thousand and seventeen. And we stood up two-one-one then and began offering the services. Two-one-one is interconnected statewide. The telephony is such that when someone calls two-one-one, the call is actually answered in Monroe at the United Way of Northeast Monroe, and that's for the whole state with the exception of the Lafayette area. Now, in our house, we have someone, Ms. Lou Drody, who's here in the audience. She is our resource database specialist, and what she does is she makes sure that all the resources are current and valid in the two-one-one database. So when their call is answered on the screen, it pops up, first question they'll be asked after they've been welcomed is, "What zip code do you live in?" And then, once that zip code is done, then all the resources are there for the person to be given that, that help that they need. Since November of two thousand and seventeen, from Bossier Parish, we've had twenty-seven, twenty-two calls, and that is an increasing number, although it has somewhat stabilized. During Hurricane Barry, there were fourteen calls coming out of Bossier City. It was primarily people who had evacuated from down south and found themselves in Bossier Parish. One of the things we've also done is we've integrated some statewide contracts. One is with the Department of Child and Children and Family Services. And what that hat, what that does is, in a time of emergency, the governor can activate the two-one-one calling system as the primary resource for disaster, and that actually happened. Governor Edwards activated us, and that just lets you see a little bit of that. We also activated in time of disaster, we have a texting platform that people can actually text, like to find out where is the nearest shelter, where can I go to receive SNAP benefits since I've been relocated, questions such as that, and so we have that available. And this is a sample of what texting looks like. There were fifty-five, sixty text messages to the eight-nine-eight-two-one-one number, and that just shows you what was on, thirty-two shelters with five-hundred-and-thirty-three people in shelter. We've also entered into a relationship with the Department of Corrections. We are running a program called Exit Three-One-Eight, which stands for Ex-Offenders in Transition. Last year, it was in Caddo Parish. We've now been awarded the contract for Bossier Parish, and we will be expending approximately two-hundred thousand dollars per year for the next three years, helping prisoners re-enter the system, wrapping services around them, but two-one-one will play a huge part in that process. We're also working with the Department of Health and Hospitals. We have entered into an opioid contract, and so that when somebody has an opioid issue, whether they need treatment, whether they suspect someone in their family has some needs, they'll be able to get help. Some new advancements. We are trotting out in a time of disaster. Apple has Siri. Google, I think, has Alexa. Well, we have Carla. Carla's better looking than the other two ladies, but anyway, I didn't mean for that to be a sexist response. It stands for Cognitive Automated Response Learning Agent, and it is exactly that. In a time of disaster, you can, you can, you can pull that up, and you can speak and ask questions, and you'll get a response. IBM approached the Louisiana Association of United Ways and asked if we would work with them to develop that. We're only the second state after Florida to have this service that'll be available to the citizens. And this is kind of what it looks like. It'll show up on your, on your smartphone, giving you answers. I've been fast. Your time is precious. Questions?
Any questions, council?
Pledge brought this. This is very interesting. I wasn't aware of, I wasn't aware of it at all.
Well, we work real hard. Your, your first responders are very much aware of it. We have briefed all the fire departments in Bossier Parish, Bossier City, as well as city government. If you go across the hallway and go up to the mayor's office, you'll see prominent posters with two-one-one, and so we're continuing to work to get the, get the word out. But it's a fantastic system, and we've been able to help and reach more people. We've changed who we work with. We used to be, when you'd ask somebody, "What does United, who United Way work with?" They'd say, "Poor people." Well, what that means is generally people who fall below the federal poverty line, family of four, that's twenty-two thousand approximate dollars. There's all kinds of services available for people that make less than that. There's very few, though, if you make above twenty-two thousand. And so what two-one-one does is it helps us identify what the issues are and then bring other resources to bear on that.
Great information. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
You're welcome.
For coming to speak to us today. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Stacy Fernandez, our city finance director, will give our monthly finance report. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial statements for the month October two thousand and nineteen. Page one is our revenues by fund. We're at a hundred and twelve percent, and the portion that pertains to the sales tax collections for the general fund is at a hundred and three percent. Page two are our expenses by fund, and we are at ninety-five percent. Page three are our sales tax collections, and we are very close to being break-even with last year at a point-two percent below last year, which is eighty-six thousand dollars. Page four is our manning. We currently have six-hundred-and-seventy-two employees. That's up two from last month, and we're still twenty-nine employees below the budget. And finally, our water and sewer report for the month of October. We're at a hundred and two percent. Year-to-date, we're at fifty-four percent. To budget, we're a hundred and one percent, and the rolling twelve months is a hundred and nine percent. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, council? The numbers look very good. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for that report. Okay, Mark Hudson, our city engineer, will give our monthly project report. Welcome, Mark.
Hey, council. Viking Drive, our title work's complete, our right-of-way maps are complete. They were hand-delivered down to Baton Rouge yesterday. The review of those documents shouldn't take too long. After that's done, our appraiser, David Volantine, can start visiting with the owners of the thirty-seven different parcels. Our Coleman Street project is down in Baton Rouge, is still being reviewed. We're trying to schedule a meeting with DOTD.
What was that you just said?
Coleman Street.
No, the thirty-seven, David Volantine.
There's thirty-seven parcels of property to be acquired along Viking Drive.
And David Volantine?
He's the appraiser that will visit with him. Ronnie Smith, of course, is our land agent that, he sent letters, but David Volantine, I think, will, well, I know that he'll come in and appraise the properties.
Sorry. Is that normal? That's the normal procedure? Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir, that's, that's typical. Once the right-of-way plans are approved by DOTD, then we're going to get them appraised by David Volantine, who's already done a lot of the comp, comp work done on it, and then Ronnie Smith has already sent out the just compensation letters, letting the owners know that offers will be sent to them soon.
And that comes from Mr. Volantine, the offers?
The offers come from Ronnie Smith.
Okay, so Ronnie Smith is the one that reaches out with the offer?
Yes, sir.
And all the title work's been completed?
Yes, sir. That had to be, that had to be finished before the right-of-way plans were submitted.
Anyway, I just wanted to understand, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So thank you for the clarification.
Back to Coleman Street. We're trying to arrange a meeting with DOTD mid-December to go over our plans and our right-of-way maps there. This project's still set to bid November of next year. In my opinion, that's too late. After the holidays, I'm going to visit with our friends at DOTD about how we can move that bid date up.
What, Mark, why, why do they take so long?
My best short answer is it's DOTD, and there's federal money involved. If it were our money, we'd be building it right now. Innovation Drive's coming along well, all the water and sewers in the ground, the wet wells being constructed, the big bridge, the big box culverts, they've all been set in place. That's a big deal. Right now, the head walls are being constructed on either end of them. After that's complete, there's, there's virtually nothing left to do but commence to start building the street. That contract runs through August twenty-eighth of next year. We're going to beat the heck out of that. There's an ordinance on the day's council, I hope you approve it, to provide some money for streetlight, street lighting along Innovation Drive. Waltrau Bigby Phase One, that section Highway eighty that's under construction right now, we work hard at it, our contractor does, every single day. Last week, I told you we needed to bore a six-inch diameter storm culvert underneath seven railroad tracks. We did that, everything went well. But that's not to say we haven't had some problems. I've mentioned to you before the issues with relocating or installing the new water line and hooking up all the old lines to the new water line. Council, I've spent about two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars, change order stuff, to get that done. And at the roundabout in front of the police evidence storage building, we actually uncovered a small landfill there. The additional expense there was about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So you add those two numbers together, we're a little bit north of four percent of our contract amount. It's not, well, four percent is four percent. It was an eleven-million-dollar contract. I know better than to sit here and tell you we're finished having surprises, but things are going pretty well right now.
Is that somewhere that you could, kind of like a whip schedule, working process? Are you familiar with that? Where we can, it's, in other words, it's an idea of tracking total estimated cost, you know, or contract price, whatever you want to call it, where we are to date, and then we have a over-budget number?
Yeah.
So that we can work with Stacy to make sure that we find the money?
Yes, sir.
Available for that, because it will be one-time money. But we, again, as Councilman Williams and I have discussed in the past, we, we have to be cognizant that all these projects are accounted for with the debt, and we cannot use the debt, or we're going to run short down the road on the projects.
Yes, sir.
So I would like it if we could keep track of that and, you know, that number, because it seems to be growing, and I'm sure it'll grow ever more until the project's complete, and probably thereafter as well, so that we can start planning with Ms. Fernandez where we can take that money from. It's like Mr. Hogg pointed out with the bathroom, we needed an additional hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. We're able to go find that because it's one-time money, you know, in a, in a surplus fund balance somewhere, so.
Yes, sir. I'll work something up. Thank you.
David, Mark, you, is that something you can just do a spreadsheet when you do this? Every month, you can just give us that spreadsheet on the overage and?
I could do that. Yes, sir.
You're the man.
Waltrau Bigby Carriage Way, the bigger project. Lots of moving parts to that, but we work on those things almost every day. There's still eight parcels of right-of-way that we haven't settled up on yet. I mentioned to you last month that we're redesigning the storm, stormwater outflow to the river. That's going to help us, well, it's going to help us get a permit from the Corps of Engineers.
How are we coming on that?
Some preliminary engineering was done and sent to me just today, and I'm working with our designer there to hurry up on that part that needs to be permitted with the Corps to get that in over at Vicksburg as soon as possible.
As appreciated on your little chart, that was somewhere around February or March as far as an approval?
Well, it was six months out on my little chart. I can't recall where that stretched out to, but...
Somewhere in the springtime.
Yeah. Hopefully, you know, it was my best guess, and I need to work up a new chart. That chart's about three months old now, but I'll get that to you also.
That doesn't mean you're just going to extend it, right?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it any shorter.
I'm surprised the Corps of Engineers always works faster than you think they would.
I wish that was the case, but they're, they're pretty slow. But I have a supreme level of confidence we're going to get a permit to do what we want to do with the Corps. I'm also working with Union Pacific. I got to get permits from Union Pacific, too. Their reviews were coming along pretty good, pretty good, pretty good. They're invoicing me for their time. That made me feel good, like they were working on it. Then they kind of like went dark on me about four months ago. No more invoices, no more return phone calls, no more return emails, and what I've learned is there was some big shakeup at Union Pacific. They laid off about five-hundred people in their engineering and land department. That included the review of our project. But I've been assigned a new project manager. He emailed me this morning and tells me in nine days, they should be finished with their review. I hope, I hope that's the truth. Working with SWEPCO to help them with their relocations that are going to start in January. Mancheck is taking on a new project to... Mancheck is taking on a new project to relocate water mains that may be in conflict with our design on the Waltrou Bigby Carriage Way. That should minimize those issues that we ran into on Highway eighty with the waterline relocations. Our Swan Lake Road project, the big change order is what I call it. Its retail value now is one million nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, plus or minus. You recall, we passed an ordinance to contribute a million and a half dollars. We have a letter from Word of God Ministries committing a hundred thousand dollars. Bruce Easterly tells me before the end of this week, he'll bring to me a change order for me to sign and for Butch Ford to sign. I won't do that, because at least not until we have all the money in place. I think we're going to be bringing another ordinance back to the Council to appropriate some additional money to construct it all. You might want to think about if you want to add street lighting. That was never part of the project. I got a budget of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars there if you want to light that section of Swan Lake Road. The arena roof is complete. Came out real nice. We got a fifty-thousand-dollar change order. We added almost a hundred new roof drains. There's a small deduct, I think, for some roof vents, but I'll be bringing you a change order there. The Kroger Walmart connection is complete. Turned out pretty good. A lot of people use it. We need to put sod out there, but the sod fields are too wet to cut sod. When sod's available, we'll get it and we'll put it down.
Mark, one thing I don't think we even took into consideration was how it's going to help with the foot traffic, bicycles, wheelchairs. I've seen all that, using that pass-through now that had a fence before. They... If they even wanted to travel over to some of the fast-food restaurants, other things, they had to come all the way out to Airline Drive, and it was a little dangerous. So that has improved that immensely for not just vehicles, but also the foot traffic.
Yes, sir. And lastly, we have that project to build a new sidewalk down on Highway seventy-one in the vicinity of the arena. Just got comments back from DOTD about an hour ago, and there's a lot of comments. So Mike McSwain and I were just visiting about it. We're going to address those real soon, get them back to DOTD in hopes of getting a permit, and we're going to build it. That's all I got, Council, if you've got any questions.
What is the project on Hamilton Road? I noticed it was closed, or are they doing some work today?
Kansas City Southern is rehabilitating their tracks throughout town. I think it had something to do with that.
Okay.
And I know that Kansas City Southern plans on replacing that bridge at the underpass.
Okay.
They're going to do the work themselves, and that's going to happen sometime soon, so there'll be some more inconvenience to motorists once that happens. But it'll be good to get that old trestle bridge out of there.
Mark, in Golden Meadows, in Golden Meadows Drive, there's a lot of construction in the middle of the road there. What is that? Was it...
Gary Nethery had a storm sewer collapse there.
Okay. I've seen those where it just gets eroded around the storm drains and everything starts going down. It looked like a big project.
Yes, sir, it was.
It looks like on Delhi, there's something else that kind of like that.
You got... You stumped me on Delhi. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, back by Red River Chevy, the road sank.
Is that some... Ben's going, "Mm-hmm, that's me."
Yeah. Well, thank you for your report. Any other questions?
Yeah, can you let us know what's going on on Barksville Boulevard near the...
East Bank.
East Bank. They got the roads blocked off.
Oh, yeah. It's open today. I saw it. They're fixing the...
We had three pedestrian crosswalks there. They were brick pavers across the street. They settled. It just wasn't acceptable, too bumpy. And the engineers that designed it and the contractor that built it volunteered to rebuild those for us. A much better design this go-around. They've done two of them. There's one more to go.
Okay.
The two they've done look great. I went down and looked at those, and yeah, glad to see that.
Thanks, Council.
You.
Okay, so that's the end of committee reports. Unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars from the Water Capital Contingency to perform a pilot study to determine if nanofiltration can eliminate enough organics from Bossier City water to use free chlorine in lieu of chloramines. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from Council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for repairs to miscellaneous sewer lift stations for a total of a hundred thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to install a small grinder pump station to service New Field of Dreams restrooms at a cost of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to come from the 2016 Sales Tax Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard, McElroy, and Vestral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the City of Bossier City CenturyLink Arena Fund, Firemen's Pension and Relief Fund, and Policemen's Pension and Relief Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Please cast your vote. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-27 Animal Control Renovations.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this project is one million three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. I'm going to be reading four numbers per bid, a base price, and three alternates. There's one addendum that provided the pre-bid mandatory sign-in sheet, revised plans, provided questions and answers, and a list of prior manufacturer's products. The first bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for one million five-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, one-five-two-nine-zero-zero-zero. Alternate one is fifty-two-thousand, five-two-zero-zero-zero. Alternate two is fourteen-thousand-five-hundred, one-four-five-zero-zero. And alternate three is seven-thousand-three-hundred, seven-three-zero-zero. The next bid is from Con Contracting LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. The base price is one million two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, one-two-eight-nine-zero-zero-zero. Alternate one, thirty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, three-seven-one-six-three. Alternate two, twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven, one-two-three-two-seven. And alternate three is five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-six, five-five-four-six. And the last bid is from M&amp;M Builders, Inc. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. The base price is one million four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, one-five... I'm sorry, one-four-five-zero-zero-zero-zero. Alternate one is forty-five-thousand, four-five-zero-zero-zero. Alternate two is fourteen-thousand, one-four-zero-zero-zero. And alternate three is five-thousand, five-zero-zero-zero. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids?
So moved.
Second. So we've got a motion and a second.
Hey, Scott, I had just a question. When we were... I don't... Gary's not here. We had five hundred, then we gave them an additional million, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So it was one-point-five million?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think the five was... Five hundred was capital outlay, and then...
Yeah, we already had five, and we put another million out of the bond with it.
Any other questions from the Council? Any comments from the audience? Okay, then, Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to come from the 2017 tax bond issue to be used to contract with AEP SWEPCO to provide street lighting for Innovation Drive, and to provide incidental construction to facilitate the street lighting system. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council?
Mark, can I ask you a question? In the past, on developments and so forth, we... This is normal procedure for us to pay for street lights?
Yes, sir. We're going to own... Well, somebody's got to pay for them, and of course, we're building Innovation Drive.
I'm just asking, in the past, what has been... Historically, who has paid for what?
In a project like this, the city has paid for...
Like Sterling and...
Yes, sir.
All of it. We're not... This is something that is... That we do quite rarely.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is.
On projects.
And in this particular case, as part of the Innovation Drive project, the street, the contract that's underway right now, that contractor's actually providing the foundation and the underground conduit. Saves us a lot of money. And then SWEPCO, for two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, will come back and stand the lights up and hook them all up. If you just pay SWEPCO to do a turnkey thing, foundations, conduit, and everything, that number would have been probably three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars.
So is that something that we should contemplate or incorporate into the bid of the road, or...
Well, we do. We do.
It's already in there.
Okay. I didn't know then why we're asking for more money.
Yeah. Well...
I mean, if it's already in there, I'm not sure why we're writing another...
Here's what's already in there, Councilman. The foundations and the underground conduit.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to contract with AEP SWEPCO. We're going to contract with AEP SWEPCO to cut state...
All right, let me just... Let's cut to the chase. From now on, when we get a project and we're going to build Innovation Drive, when we have a cost, let's put in the cost of the lighting, too. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Because we're coming back now asking for more money, when I would like to know the cost upfront. We certainly would have known this. Is that right, that we were...
It was all... Cost of street lights was always in the big budget for Innovation Drive, and this check will go to SWEPCO. It doesn't... You know, I'm not going to pay our contractor two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. This check goes to SWEPCO.
Okay. I guess it was my misunderstanding then, when we bid the job, or we estimated the cost, this was not included, or it was.
It was. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then I stand corrected.
Listen, on the wording, provide incidental construction. What is that?
They... SWEPCO is asking that in order for them to do what they're going to do for us there, I need to build a rock road for them to access, I guess, the service area where the power comes from, and that's incidental to the street lights.
Is that included in the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So incidental and change orders, not the same thing?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Question, this is street lights from Swan Lake Road all the way to Inception, right?
Yes, sir.
If not, that's just a little piece. It's the whole schmear.
They go from... Well, they go from where we left off in front of the Honda dealership all the way over to Airline Drive.
Same kind of lights as you see there now?
Yes, sir. A thirty-foot-tall brushed aluminum Cobra head stock.
Brushed aluminum. What is that?
It's just... Well, it's a brushed aluminum standard street light.
The one that, like, galvanized?
Well, it's not going to be green.
I thought we talked about that.
We talked about signals being green, not street lights.
Do we have street lights on... in front of the board block that are green?
We own those. These are going to be owned and operated and maintained by AEP SWEPCO. If somebody knocks one down, they're going to come fix it for us. They're going to own them. After we pay the...
Therefore, we have no choice in the color.
Well, they... We don't. They have about five stock street lights that they will provide, and this is the one that you typically see.
You know, we always started that in front of Holmes Line, those raw aluminum ones. So carrying this out makes sense, but you were right about the stoplight when you get over Swan Lake Road. I think he's providing for the green there.
We own some street lights. The city owns some street lights, and that's when we have the opportunity to install whatever we want to. Like, down Highway eighty, I think there's seventy-six vintage-style street lights with the big acorn at the top. You know, we're going to own those, and that's part of the street contract. That's in there. It's paid for on Highway eighty. This is different, because we're going to pay SWEPCO to come provide these street lights, and they're going to own them and maintain them. And we're going to pay the electricity on them. This is what we always do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, from Mr. Harvey, and a second by Mr. Free.
And we... Comments from the audience? Any other questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the water tank rehabilitation and painting project. This is for two tanks for a total of four million eight-hundred-thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. First reading?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance transferring twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred dollars from herbicide and mosquito control operational budget chemicals to fund four-ten Parkway capital projects. Herbicide and mosquito control for vehicles. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer subbase MBC zero-four rehabilitation project for a total of seven-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars to come from the sewer contingency fund. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to rehab the Waller Street gravity main at a cost of one million dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the Council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two police communications officers for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the Council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution supporting the U.S. Census to be taken in 2020 in the City of Bossier City, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. First and final reading?
So moved. So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel?
I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. President, Mayor, on the, uh, resolution, I know that's a support. Will there be any active, uh, effort to promote the census in the city?
Pam, come on, yeah, we're gonna try to look more at, uh, hospitals and other places for populations that may have not been counted and those sorts of things, but Pam can give a better explanation.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Darby, what we'd be doing, we'll be putting together a community outreach committee. Uh, I'm composing that committee right now, looking at local churches, people that can actually get the word out to people to do, to make sure they're counted in that. And then we, as a city, have been working with the Department of Census for over a year, year and a half on what they call a LUCA. It's, uh, it's looking at the local area governments, looking at the number of houses that have been constructed, apartment units that are being built. Like, oh, Bossier, there's been some new apartments being built there. To ensure that those units are all identified in that census. So we do assure that we get that complete count because we know how important, uh, getting that count is correct for Bossier City and Bossier Parish as well. So we, we have a gentleman out of, uh, Metairie area who's working with us. He has asked for this, this to support the, the cause. Uh, it's, communities across the state are doing, the country basically are doing this and doing that. So we'll have a committee. I'm reaching out to local churches so I can go out and, not necessarily bring them all in at one time for one big meeting, but go out and reach to them so they can make sure that their parishioners and their, their congregations assure that they get the count out. We get counted, so Bossier, Bossier gets the monies that we are, we're assured of.
Sure, yeah, that's, that makes sense. Do you have a, um, I guess, a partnership with the, uh, parish government or the school?
Yes, sir, the parish, well, we, as, we've had one meeting in the past. We had a meeting October last year, and the parish was part of that with the tax assessor and the police jury, uh, being part of that and school boards as well. So we'll bring that same group together and add to it as well.
Great.
Because the process actually starts, 2020 is gonna be here before we turn around, and April 1st is Census Day.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good to know, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Pam. Any other questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for Bel Air Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, February 25th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the sewer subbase NBC 15 project for an increase of $130,575.80. Total cost of contract with increase $2,24,718.40.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station project for an increase of $61,000. Total cost of contract with increase $840,879.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. Got our add-ons?
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $10,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to fund a Christmas and holiday lighting proposal from Red River Lights, LLC. First reading?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
Where are these gonna be?
Uh, yeah, where are the lights gonna be?
Mr. Montgomery.
East Bank and the Plaza area, I believe.
Yeah, you know where the rusted metal is?
Rustic, is that what it is?
Best way for me to describe it, otherwise known as metal art. Mr. Hall's all too familiar with that. He probably could explain that better than I can, but next to that, there's gonna be a, and I think we can probably have the gentleman here next time to do a display, but it's like a 17 or 20-foot tree, and it changes shapes and colors and, like, a laser light display. And they're also gonna cover up the rusted metal for the period during the holidays with lights so that there will be something attractive on the rusted metal. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and there's pictures in your packets.
The ordinance is a...
Boy, he's in a room.
Okay, it's on there?
There is pic- pictures in your packets that has, has the...
Pictures in your, in your...
Okay.
Now, we're gonna own this decorations, right?
Well, yeah, and then they charge half that amount the following year to come put it back up. So it'll, the cost next year will be 5,000. Mr. Williams and I, they had, the East Bank had approached us, and, uh, it just looked like something that would really energize, you know, down there and give people, um, the holiday spirit, so to, so to speak, you know.
And David's gonna play Santa Claus down there every weekend.
Good Lord.
It'd be a straight before we'd be Santa Claus.
I was going to.
We'll get Tommy to do it.
Okay, we've got...
Their proposal covers the storage boxes and everything, too.
Okay. So we, comments from the audience? Any other questions from the counsel?
Oh, wait. It says everybody got kicked off?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's up here.
What?
Counsel, cast your vote. Let's see what happens.
Oh, processing.
Oh, we may be kicked off. You wanna take a voice vote?
Yes.
I already voted, it's counted on here.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the City of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for the Viking Drive Road Project. First reading?
So move.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Are there any announcements? Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Being in this meeting, it's adjourned. Thank you for coming.